Join me for the flag salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cordia. Tracy Allen. Barbara.
Here.
Allen.
Here.
Annette.
Here.
Stephanie.
Here.
John.
Here.
Doug.
Here.
Elizabeth.
Here.
Anna.
Here.
Joy.
Joy contacted me today and said she was unable to be here.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with this provision of this act, the Riverdale Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this regular meeting to be publicized by having the date, time, and place sent to the record and the Star Ledger newspapers, the borough clerks, borough libraries, as well as posting in school district principal offices, faculty rooms, and the board office. According to New Jersey Public Law 2001, Chapter 226, the smoking or use of any tobacco product is strictly prohibited anywhere in the public school buildings or anywhere in school grounds, including but not limited to the parking lots, grassy areas, and athletic fields. Violators will be subject to a fine not to exceed $100.
The mission of the Riverdale Regional School District is to provide a safe, student-centered environment in which each student is valued and respected, to challenge each student to reach their potential, to nurture every student's intellectual, social, physical, and emotional growth, to promote a healthy work ethic, passion for learning, and a respect for oneself and others, to develop responsible citizens for our diverse community and an ever-changing world, to continue to involve our community in an active partnership, to provide all students the opportunity to achieve and exceed the New Jersey Student Learning Standards.
Thank you, Annette. We'll go into public comments on agenda items only. And as always, there will be a segment at the end of the meeting for comments on anything else pertaining to Riverdale Regional School District. Do we have any public comments on agenda items only? No? Okay, we have a presentation today. DECA students, Tammy Lanahan, the advisor, does Patrick have a lead-in for this?
Well, I just took an informal survey of the three students that are here today, and it's a toss-up over who was more fun, whether it was Mrs. Lanahan or Mrs. Correa when they were away on their trip. Now, aside from that, this is an opportunity for our students who competed in Atlanta, right? Was it Atlanta or Orlando? Orlando, sorry. Who competed in Orlando to, in the recent National DECA Tournament, to come and give us a little idea about their experience. So, I don't know, Tammy, if you want to say something first?
So, yeah, we survived our third ICDC, and it's a privilege, of course, always, for myself and my students to attend. They were, it was 22,000 people there, and they're competing, so it was great. Also, we want to thank you from the bottom of our heart. We appreciate all the support, both me and the students from, you know, the board, Mr. Fletcher, Tiffany, Mr. Pepe, and all the administrators and all the staff, because they did get a call from me, you know, while we were there. Good call, but, you know, so they're awesome. And I just wanted to show just kind of like where we were, where we are now, and where we're going with DECA. And we started with just 19 students when we established in 2020. And we went from 19 to 32 this year, 58, and I'm anticipating probably about 97 student members next year. And it looks bright, our future. We were ICDC the very first year, so it's a very big honor. So, I'd like to introduce Sydney to come up. She was one of our competitors, so she's going to give you a little brief about how she did and what her experience was.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education. My name is Sydney Fojas, and my partner, Bria Kim, and I were two out of the 16 members in Riverdale's DECA team that was able to qualify for the international competition in Orlando, Florida. We had the great honor to represent not only Riverdale, but also the state of New Jersey, being one of the six groups to make it past the state competitions. Instead of being able to enjoy the beautiful weather in Florida, my partner and I were on a mission, and we were determined to give our presentation our all and the best we could. Our competition lasted for two days. On the first day, we took an exam about the general knowledge of marketing concepts, and on the second day, we did a 15-minute presentation in front of a judge about a marketing campaign that we came up with and wrote a 10-page paper about prior to the competition. So, as you can see, our marketing product was the Liquid Lash Extensions Mascara. And we, for states, we made a, like, we hand you a presentation, and that was like a visual aspect of our PowerPoint, including our PowerPoint. And so, at states, looking around at all of our competitors, we knew we had to up our presentation. So, we took advantage of the digital resources in the high school, and we were able to print out a digital copy of a new presentation that included features that our judges at states really liked. We were so driven and determined that the night before our presentation, we stayed up the whole time meticulously running through our lines for what seemed like the 1,000th time. It shows how invested we were into this competition, and DECA really gave us the opportunity to learn more about how to put together complex projects like this. So, we felt like we were really doing an actual business model, and it gave us firsthand experiences about how real professional projects are like in the business world. Being in this competition, for me personally, I felt like I was really able to develop a deeper problem-solving skills. For example, we had to find a way to transport the poster board from New Jersey to Florida, and so my amazing advisor and chaplain, Ms. Correa and Ms. Lanahan, really helped guide us along the way, and we were able to find a secure way to make it through airport security. In addition, in states, our judge really liked one aspect of our presentation that was in our paper, but we never really talked about. So, last minute, we really had to incorporate that into our final round. And so, just being able to do that on, like, thinking about our time and just managing our time with that really showed, like, I feel like real-world problems that we'd have to face in the future. And so, despite our efforts and to our disappointment, we were unable to place. However, we are using that as motivation for next year to compete and come back even stronger and perform even better. And so, to us, our first year at ICDC was so memorable in so many ways. Universal Studios was closed off just for DECA competitors, and being there and waiting on all the lines for the ride, we were able, really able to meet so many people from all different states. And so, for example, we met these two students from Indiana who were telling us their experience with DECA in their school and how business to them was so different to business to us, because they were doing human resources and business operations, while we were really focusing on marketing aspect of it. So, being at this huge international event gave us opportunity to network with other people, learn how they were executing their own projects and presentations. Overall, this experience was truly amazing and something we will never forget for years to come. We are so grateful to have this opportunity, and we really want to thank you for your time. Thank you.
So, we also had an opportunity to have students attend. They have academies there, so we had two students that were able to attend the Thrive Academy. So, I'd like to bring them up, Irene and Sophia.
Hello, my name is Irene Cho, and I was one of the two Riverdale students that attended the Thrive Academy hosted at ICDC in Orlando, Florida. Thrive Academy was a wonderful event and a pleasure to attend. The speakers were amazing, knew how to make things fun, and they also knew how to engage the audience really well. And through all the activities, I got to know so many people in such a short amount of time. And I also made a point to sit next to someone new for the majority of the lectures, which led to me making a lot of new friends I still talk to today. I met a lot of people from Nebraska, Missouri, and some from New Jersey, which I decided to meet up with later this summer. And so, I still speak to a lot of them today, and so I got to know so many people and make a lot of connections. And each speaker spoke about leadership, but presented it in a different way. Some taught through presentations and stories, and others taught through hands-on activities. But in the end, they all spoke about leadership, and we learned about the skills of leadership and how they're used in real-life situations. We learned about leadership techniques, what kind of leaders we were, and how our role would look like in a team setting. And my leadership quality personally is being a nurturer, which means that going to me for my opinion in a group would typically give you the general audience's opinion as well as we make up 41% of the population. And we learned, we also learned that nurturers should speak first, as they tend to easily get clammed up in a group setting, and they easily get drowned out. So, we also learned many useful things like this, which I'll keep and hopefully use in the future. And overall, we, overall, this opportunity was, this was a really wonderful opportunity, and thank you. And hopefully, I'll be able to attend again next year. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sophia Cho, and I was the other attendee for the Thrive Academy. So, thank you so much for funding our trip and letting us have this opportunity to become better leaders for our, not only our school, but for the future ahead of us. And I really wanted to thank all the board members and our advisors for guiding us throughout the entire trip. And so, throughout Thrive, the different speakers really taught us how to become different, become better leaders by engaging us in different activities, like, such as teamwork and, like, just stepping outside of our comfort zone and introducing ourselves to new people, so that our first speaker would, like, make us form groups with, like, five random people that we've never met before, and we would introduce ourselves, talk about ourselves, disperse again, group up with three new people, and we just kept, it was like a repetitive process that I really enjoyed, because I love introducing myself and building more connections. And also, another experience that we had for another speaker was we had a teamwork activity where we had to solve a puzzle with a bunch of random people that we never knew. So, we would have to work together and solve a puzzle that was not even in our language, but in some, like, random scripted language that was really confusing. And like, another speaker, and another speaker would, oh, yeah. So, another speaker had us present a topic that we wanted to introduce to all the different DECA chapters and why this presentation could appeal to DECA members and how we should support it. And I volunteered to present for my group, and it was under the topic of ALS, which was, it's a deteriorates muscle mass, it's a genetic disease. And we talked about how, and through this presentation, we earned points from different, the spectators, and they gave us points, and we came up in third place with 131 points. So, that was extremely fun. And I really think this opportunity gave me, like, taught me how to become a better leader, and it really taught me what qualities that people look for in leaders. And I really want to use the skill that I learned to guide our DECA next year and introduce this DECA to upcoming high school students. And yeah, thank you so much.
Okay, I have a couple. It's okay. So, when I was in high school, DECA stood for Distribution, Distributive Education Clubs of America. Does it still stand for that? And the purpose behind that is to introduce students to business, correct? So, Mrs. Lanahan, you are also a teacher of what? Business, very good. So, it does align quite nicely with this. And then, the, what does the acronym for the TRIP, what'd you say, IC? What is that?
International Career Development Conference.
And you said there were 22,000 students there who are competing?
Around that, yes.
Around that, roughly. And from, not just from America?
There was Japan, South Korea, Germany, Canada.
And you were able to go to this competition because what did you do before that? You had to compete somewhere else, right? And before that? And before that, amongst other school districts? So, you went to a district competition? And then to a state competition? And then to the international competition? So, it wasn't just an event, one-day event, you built?
Yeah, we had to qualify, and so, Sydney qualified for ICDC, which gave Irene the opportunity to go to Thrive.
Yeah, we needed to try.
What did we have to do?
Oh, so, we had to volunteer for Thrive. We had to qualify for, like, this amount of volunteer hours to even get a go to the Thrive Academy?
Yeah, so we did Thanksgiving baskets for the needy. We raised money for a charity. So, you have to check off these certain requirements, and we got, we had three slots, so we were able to take.
And the competition was last, was two weeks ago, right?
Yeah.
Right, but the point I was really trying to get at, which I appreciated, is that you started on this journey in, like, September to get to where you are. It didn't just happen because you got lucky one day. Right? And I just want to thank the board, because it's been a few years that we've done this, but, you know, the board, we've always been a supporter of the athletic program, and our athletes going to their competitions across the state and whatnot. We had a long conversation here at the Board of several years ago about whether or not we should, if you will, treat our non-athletic academic competitors in the same way. And it's been a result of really your leadership as a board that we are in a position where we can support this program to move it forward. And it's not the only one. We have Odyssey of the Mind and the forensic competition, which I'm forgetting the name of at the moment, but that stuff, which I appreciate the board doing. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Now, you are welcome to stay and learn about the marketing of a board of ed, but you could also leave if you wish, so, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. They almost didn't want to leave. They took you seriously. They're all sophomores. They're all sophomores, or they're afraid. Oh, you almost scared them to stay.
Wait, what was the best mascara? I did not, I did not get that useful. Oh, that's the mascara that they were...
Okay, we'll hop into student member report. I don't know who wants to start. Anna, Lucy?
I'll start with some events from the high school. Like we just saw in the presentation, some of our Riverdale students competed at the DECA International Career Development Conference in Orlando. The National Honor Societies held their induction ceremony on April 27, where students were sworn into their honor societies based on prestigious academic performances. Bring Your Child to Work Day took place at Riverdale High School on April 27, where students and staff gave each child a glimpse of a day at Riverdale and a fun experience overall. Seniors celebrated their college decisions on May 1st by ripping their college merch to school. AP testing began for students also on May 1st and will take place over the next couple of weeks. Anatomy student Isabel Lee was selected as a winner in this year's NJABR, SPARC High School Student Poster Contest called Biomedical Research and My Life. Isabel will be honored at their annual awards dinner Thursday, June 1st, at the Hershey Lodge in Hershey, Pennsylvania. The Riverdale Drama Club has been nominated for multiple Bergen Pack High School Musical Awards. Their production of The Little Mermaid was nominated for John Herbeck for Outstanding Set Design of a Musical, Sarah Wettenfeld for Outstanding Costume, Hair, and Makeup Design of a Musical, and Lea Winger for Outstanding Featured Role as Sebastian. Now for some updates on sports. Baseball beat Indian Hills in Beckton last week. Boys Golf won the Big North Patriot Division Title last week and finished undefeated in the division, improving to 20-1 on the season, including wins last week over Dumont, Bergenfield, Ramsey, Maua, Pascake Hills, Indian Hills, Westwood, and Demarest. The team competed in state sectionals today and finished in third place. Alex Na took second overall. On Thursday, the Hawks will compete in the county tournament at Soldier Hill Golf Club. The team is ranked 12 in the record. For boys lacrosse, they're now 10-3 on the season after beating Fairlawn at home on Saturday. Senior Finn Christian broke the school record for career points with 166 total points, goals, and assists, with four of each in the victory over Fairlawn on Sunday, on Saturday, sorry. For boys tennis, they're now 10-5 on the season, including a win last week over Caldwell. and tomorrow the Hawks will play at Paskett Hills at 4:15. For girls lacrosse, they're now 10-2 on the season with two wins last week over Paskett Hills and Ramsey. The team is ranked number 10 in the record. For softball, they defeated Macet Conception at home in the county tournament, and last week, the Hawks won on a walk-off at home against Westwood, and now have a 10-8 record on the season. The team is ranked number nine in Big North by NJ.com and number 19 in the record. For track, the boys and girls teams both won the Big North Patriot Division Championships last Friday at home. This is the 10th consecutive division championship for the boys team and third in a row for the girls team. The 10th straight title for the boys is a school record for all sports. The third straight division title for the girls is also their 10th in 11 years. This week, the Hawks will compete in the county groups at Olta Pan on Friday and Saturday. The girls are ranked number six in the state of New Jersey by NJ.com. Both teams are ranked in the record, the boys are number four, and the girls are number eight.
Okay, I'm kind of losing my voice, so my apologies for that. For the middle school, congratulations to both boys and girls track and field teams for finishing first in a try-me against Mawa and Montvale last Thursday. They are scheduled to compete again this Thursday at Riverdale High School. The Riverdale Middle School Drama Club was on full display the evening of April 27th, with the cast and crew putting on a series of monologues. Special recognition to Ms. Ryabov and Ms. Kason for leading these very talented students in an outstanding performance. In preparation for their World Service Project, the middle school's Spanish Honor Society will be selling bracelets made by artists from Nicaragua and Guatemala. These artists sell their work through the Pulsar Project in schools across the United States. Proceeds from those bracelet sales are then invested in programs that support the artists, their communities, educational scholarships, and other organizations focused on enacting social change in Central America. Now for upcoming events. Brian Sinclair, Chief of Cyber Crimes Unit from the Bergen County Prosecutor's Office, will hold an information session in the high school library on Tuesday, May 9th at 7:00 p.m. The session will inform parents on cyber safety topics such as cyberbullying, harassment, and child predators. A third collegiate signing day will take place Tuesday, May 9th, in the library for any senior student athlete who will be participating in collegiate athletics to commemorate their commitment to their school. RDTV will be coordinating and filming both the senior college decision video and 2023 lift-up in the upcoming weeks. The SEAL Up by Literacy celebration will take place this Thursday, May 11th, at 7:00 p.m. in the high school courtyard. Congratulations to the 52 seniors being commended for this achievement.
I'll move on to my report, which is nothing left, since you covered everything so thoroughly, so I'm going to pass it over to you, Patrick.
I just want to emphasize a couple of things that were just said. Again, I want to thank the board for their support of our non-athletic competitors. I think that's a worthy and wonderful cause that we've been able to do. And our, as you can see, it's having a very positive effect because the DECA program is expanding as it goes forward. Now, I'm spacing, you just, the last, second to last thing you just said, Anna, what was it?
Riverdale TV.
The laptop?
Well, RDTV, and what was the next one?
The by literacy.
Oh, right, SEAL Up by Literacy, thank you. Yes, well, we know that we can't film our board meetings without the wonderful talent of RDTV, who's here in the house, but I also wanted to emphasize the SEAL Up by Literacy. Again, that's another program that has had a recent start here at Riverdale. I think it's in its second year, or is it the first, its very first year? And we have over, there's over 50 students that were able to successfully complete that program. And you can complete it in a number of different ways. You can complete it through the AP program, but these are students that did it not through that way. They did it through their competency in the schools, and I want to commend them for moving forward, and I think it's a wonderful opportunity that the high school is starting, quote-unquote, a new tradition this year by honoring those students when we come in on Thursday night. And finally, we are also in that period of time where many of us cringe because we're in the testing zone that we're in. We started testing with the middle school in the New Jersey Student Learning Standards. We started testing AP last week, and we will be also testing again for the student learning standards here at the high school in another couple of weeks. So we really go into a period of time from like the last week of April through the, almost the last week of May, where there's some form of testing going on. And the, the school community as large, it does take into consideration that, you know, they're very thoughtful here at the high school, because we run AP testing both in the morning and the afternoon in a different section of the building, and then we also have the delayed opening schedules throughout the course of the couple of weeks where we're dealing with the testing. So I thank everybody for moving forward with that. We are also in that quick, crazy zone where we're going to rush right to the end of the school year, so everybody put your tray tables in their upright position and fasten your seat belts, because here we go.
Yes, sir.
That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. I know we did have a community relations meeting prior to the board meeting tonight, so Alan, why don't you catch us up?
Sure. The meeting was dominated by the pre-referendum planning, which starts tonight, really. We're in good shape, according to our architect. We're right in the right timeline, but we have to start putting thoughts together. For the next meeting, I'm asking all the board members to come with ideas on how to sell this referendum, if they know people in either River Edge or Oradell that are good at marketing and have ideas on how to get this going. I also want to set up a meeting with the architect, Pat, and our new superintendent, along with the solutions architecture, to sit with us and go over their ideas on how to get this done. The vote is probably going to be December 13th, hopefully, but we want to get everything in place as soon as we can, so that when we go back in September, we can start really pounding the pavement and getting the job done. Does anything, Pat, you'd like to add, or Trudy?
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. I do not believe there were any other committee, if anyone leads a committee, and I don't think we had anything else.
Our facilities meeting is scheduled for next Monday.
Right. Okay, good. Let's get into consent, please. May I have a motion for consent agenda? Alan?
Second.
Stephanie, second. Does anybody have any questions or concerns on anything on the consent agenda? If not, Trudy?
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yeah.
Al?
Yes. I need to have a motion, please, to move executive items from the executive agenda except for 3B. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Stephanie, second?
I'll say.
Alan, thank you. Let me just, we have staff salary adjustment, appointment of a teacher, appointment of school assistance counselor, appointment of school counselor, and an appointment of administrators. Does anybody have any questions on the executive moving forward? Trudy, when you're ready?
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yeah.
Al?
Yes. Okay, that brings us to all business, new business. Anybody have anything? Okay.
No business.
It feels like we had a meeting last week. Public comments?
I don't know. What was, what was the record?
I, I, I don't know.
Are we shooting to exceed it, or are we shooting to make it under the wire? What's the story?
Nope, we're not paying attention to the clock. May I have a motion to adjourn? Alan?
I'll second.
Okay, Stephanie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There you go.